Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Anyone attending needs amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll get those brought to you. I see none. Everybody, please rise for the pledge. Donna, can you do a roll call, please? Oh, see, James is online.
I'm here.
Councilmember Bode on Zoom. Councilmember Sherman in person. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yeah.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
And both Councilmember McDowell and Councilmember Peterson are absent this evening.
Thank you, Donna. Is there a motion to excuse Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember McDowell? I move to excuse Councilmember Peterson and McDowell.
Second.
Right, motion to second to excuse Councilperson Peterson and McDowell. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Council, how many late changes today to the agenda? City manager, any late changes?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right. Council, have any board reports to share? All right, moving on. Does anyone review the items in the consent agenda?
Yes.
You have a motion.
Mayor, I move to present the, or move to approve the consent agenda as published. Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, tonight we have some presentations. We have three tonight. The first one is from Amy Cooper. For downtown merchants.
Mister Mayor and Councilmembers, for your time, I'm just here to give an LTAC report for last year's project funding that we've shot down all the issues received. Um, we've been working hard this year to create for a new event to continue our shop shopping, our shop local campaign. Uh, shopping, first promo short designs included in holiday magic. Halloween spectacular, our summer side wholesale and the Christmas tree type car show, uh, which we partnered with the historical society. Some new events we plan to have for twenty twenty-four are a restaurant week, art box and a girls' meetup. During the holiday season, we had our awards party active. Patrons received a punch for every twenty-five dollars spent in downtown businesses. Ours were then entered after ten punches for prices. And during holiday magic, we also held our online logo punt, which gave us directing our teams that were participating to events and businesses around downtown during the holidays to incorporate all of the events that were happening as well as the merchants that were available. Um, it has some cash prizes that entice a lot of teams to participate and we look forward to doing that again this year. And getting people moving to all of the different things happening downtown. In addition to our community members, our goal is to invite tourists while they're visiting Mesa twenty for other reasons. That they should come by downtown shop the bar back to eat, alate, and worse than shopping. Um, shop local campaigns are important for tourism because visitors get a more authentic experience within the cities they are visiting. Going where the locals go gives visitors a feel for the character of this town. Visitors are often treated more like family than a customer when business owners are members of the communities themselves. I know when I vacation, I always prefer to check out the local businesses and not the, the box stores and the cheap restaurants. So in the coming year, we will continue to hold events and to work to add to an sustained wonderful shopping opportunity, delicious restaurants and more. Uh, though we've been denied funding for the next LTAC period, it'll be our sole responsibility as business owners and volunteers to fund events and create interest for tourists and local support. It's vital that we support our local downtown businesses. Without them, those visiting our city would likely travel in to look at that town and conference or event that they're here for and not venture out and not check out what, what else shop will have to offer. We look forward to continuing to add to what downtown is currently operating. We'd like to thank that our committee for their support in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three LTAC period. And we hope for more supportive leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone have any questions for Amy? Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a presentation from Finance Director Mike Givens.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of council. Tonight, I'm presenting a short presentation on the August financial report. We'll be spending a lot of time on financial data over the next month as we look at the twenty twenty-four budget. But this is a good review of where we're at. While I focus most often on these reports on the general fund, all the funds are presented in this report. So I know some kind of that has been our focus over this year. But certainly the other funds are detailed in there as well. So the August financial report gives us, again, more data in the fiscal year to better predict where we're at. If all things were equally at the end of August, we'd be at
All right, if you want to remember, the people will be up by the
Yeah, um, sixty percent, seven percent of revenue per seat, but not everything's equal. As we know, in some ways I wish it wasn't. We've been predicting a lot each year, but think we pay certain bills at one certain time of year that are large projects and that sort of thing. So on page one here, you'll notice that the revised and estimated budget shows expenditures exceeding revenue. So when we revise the budget review in June, our expenditures exceeded by one point three million. Notice that we're estimating now the end of the year at two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. That's where expenses exceed revenue. So that's a lot better. I think the, really the focus here is that our goal is to match ongoing expenses with ongoing revenue. So there may always be a time where we have expenditure budgeted to exceed revenue. When we're using grant money or any fund balance, the fund one-time cost. But that's been a lot of hard work on city staff to match those ongoing costs with the ongoing revenue. So that's something that I wanted to celebrate just a little bit. If we could skip forward to page five. I haven't talked a lot about this, but we show a month-to-month comparison of revenues and expenditures. And I like to use this page to gauge where we're at with prior years. Particularly the last fiscal year, sales tax is our largest source on the revenue side for the general fund. And you'll notice that it was up in August. I think this is partly attributed to, and these are receipts then from the month of June because sales tax lags two months. Uh, but that's a pretty robust month for consumer spending, a lot of events in town. You know, driving tourism into town helps in a lot of ways. It helps our businesses and it helps the city budget by having people spend money in town. So that's where that is. On page six, it shows the sales tax breakdown. We show this every month. Um, on the top chart of this shows all sales tax through the month of August. And then the different breakdowns that the department of revenue gives us. So whether it's retail, comparable services, construction, et cetera. And then the bottom chart shows the sales tax received just in the month of August. And it allows us to see in particular months where certain areas by tax type change and vary to better predict where the revenue will come in. So by looking at it through August, you don't necessarily notice much. But then when you come down into August, and remember, these are sales taxes reflected through June, it really kind of tells you, okay, is construction up? Probably during the summer, um, you know, our retail varies a little bit, but we tend to see a even bigger piece of the pie or consume a bigger piece of the pie towards those heavier shopping months. So those are useful for us and, and are part of how we use to predict where the budget's going. And then I wanted to end up on page seven where I seem to always end up this report. But it shows the estimated fund balances and it's important for us all because we want to see those positive estimated fund balances, which we do. So we're, uh, we monitor that carefully. Um, of course, cost center managers and other directors monitor this to make sure that where we're going to end the year, in particular, the enterprise funds, they're looking at those really carefully. I think I pointed this out before, we've watched carefully that solid waste fund as we close out this straight landfill to make sure we have that, uh, any fund balance to spend on the ongoing monitoring costs and so forth. So, uh, we expected to draw the total fund balance down, but everything's looking good at this snapshot. And then at the bottom of this page is our update on FTE, and there isn't a change from the prior month. I do want to let you know that as you, your presentation on the twenty twenty-four budget, we'll be taking some of those positions that are in the unfilled column or vacancies as of August thirty-first and taking some recommendations to either be allocating them or reduce them in the, but the general funded balance, but we'll have more on that in the twenty twenty-four motion. That puts my prepared remarks. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike and Mark for bringing that back into, bringing that close to balance. The, the initial one point, what was it, one point six million? Um, it was looking like it. We brought it down and that's, uh, thank you.
So a lot of hard work by all the staff.
Yes.
Appreciate all this.
And some of the positions that were eliminated did not, the work didn't go away. It was just passed on to other people, give them more work to do. So thank them as well. All right, our last presentation is annual report from the Shelton Police Department. Captain Chris Costad has details for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members, uh, Mayor, good afternoon. Each year, each year, the police department generates annual reports and a professional samples of standards for uh, these reports are available online generally within the first quarter of the year. Um, the annual report contains staffing, hiring, and promotional information, calls for service, case report statistics, uh, criminal and traffic statistics, department programs, viewpoints. The professional standards report, which I'm not going to heavily get into, that we want to show probably ties into some of our statistics in the annual report. Uh, contains information regarding citizen complaints, internal investigations, vet pursuits, officer involved positions, abuse support statistics, and ice, price policing, uh, price-based police statistics. Uh, yes, that's all right. Thank you, Mayor. That's okay. Uh, the, the shop, uh, okay, uh, shop and police department is, consists of one chief, myself as a captain, five sergeants. Uh, four of those are assigned to patrol division. One of is assigned to detectives and administration. We also have two full-time detectives, nine patrol officers right now. One of those is currently in the academy. And we're going to anticipate hiring one additional one in December, which will give us full patrol officers. You know, we'll see what the future brings us. And we also have, um, two records and evidence technicians. Uh, the mission of Shelton Police Department is, our, is to provide excellent service and protection through leadership and partnership with the community. Protecting the community is at a core what we do, but we also provide a variety of traditional and non-traditional services. We will accomplish our mission by being leaders in the community and working hand and mouth with the public to make Shelton great. Uh, next slide, Mayor. Perfect. Okay. So last year, we lost two officers. One of them went on to, uh, lateral position with another department. Uh, the other officer retired after twenty-two years of service with the Shelton Police Department. That was Officer Paul Campbell. He started in, uh, twenty twenty, then ran from twenty twenty-two. Uh, he ran a wide variety of assignments. He was an active officer, officer in charge, detective, field training officer. And he's followed up, uh, at the end with, as being school resource, officer for a number of years. Who's actually Michael Train, yeah, or two thousand and six. Um, I had to pull like, yeah, approximately like, here's a month or so, but he's twenty-two to stay shut. So one and ready next time. Next one, Mayor. So with losing, uh, certain people, we have to gain more, uh, individuals obviously to fill those positions. We were able to fill it with two lateral positions and one entry level position. And if you're not familiar with the, what a lateral police officer is, it's a police officer that has completed seven, the seven hundred and twenty-hour uh, police academy, um, has been hired, has been hired by a police agency and has, uh, passed their probationary period. So we were fortunate enough to hire two of those last year for our audience. The first one was Officer Justin Whitley. We stole him, uh, from Skowatli Police Department. Uh, he had about three years of experience on him and he is, uh, very beloved in this community. He's just, uh, he's just an awesome officer to have there. He's doing wonderful. Uh, the, the second officer we, uh, we, we got was Officer Mike Yato. He worked in a number of different agencies and prior to the last one, he picked him up around, he was in clear age just prior to us. He, I think he has about twelve years' experience or so. He's doing tremendously well to them. Uh, he was just promoted to detective a few months ago. So he's, uh, just kind of an extreme asset with Shelton Police Department, you know, qualifications. Uh, our last hire was Officer Geno. He was an entry level, which means he had to go to the police academy and attend that. He no longer works for the department, but he still works for the city. Uh, he's completing COVID enforcement up there and from here, he's just, uh, doing that, that texting job up there. All right, next slide. Thank you. Uh, motion starts here. We had two detectives that were promoted to sergeant. The first one was Sergeant, or Detective Roach, now sergeant. He is, uh, currently a patrol sergeant and in charge of, in the training manager. Sergeant Lawson was promoted at the same time. He is, however, not with us anymore. It's he lateral to another department. So as you can see, we all steal from each other and we lost them. So, but, you know, what are we gonna do? We just keep playing this game. I would like to recognize Officer Olson. Olson, he, uh, coordinated his twenty years of service with the Shelton Police Department last year and Sergeant Patton. Uh, he, uh, has this fifteen years with the service for Shelton Police, uh, Police Department last year. Also like to mention, uh, Officer Diaz was nominated as Officer of the Year last year. And I want to, I want to explain to you how he becomes Officer of the Year because this is not an arbitrary decision that either Chief Reason or I may just pick him up, make out a ad or someone you like. It's actually has a process developing to it. And what happens is every police officer within the agency went to memo or has a personal conversation with the chief on why, who they think that this Officer of the Year should be and why. And Officer Diaz was chosen by majority of his peers for his dedication and service and willingness to help. And he's positive, and has a positive attitude. So, and right now, he's, uh, he's been promoted to a sergeant a few months ago. And he's doing, uh, very respected by fellow police officers. Uh, next one, Mayor. Okay, uh, few statistics here. Um, in twenty twenty-two, the Shelton Police Department responded to twelve thousand and seventy calls. Out of those calls, we took one thousand six hundred and ninety-five case reports. With those case reports, there's about five hundred and seventy arrests. In comparison to twenty twenty-one, we handled eleven thousand sixty-four calls. Yeah, eleven thousand sixty-four and one thousand five hundred and twenty case reports accumulated. And we made five hundred and four arrests. So as you can see, we've got more calls for, uh, calls for service, more case reports and more arrests from twenty-one to twenty-two. And here's where we're going to reference our professional standards report and how that correlates with, with, uh, with that. Uh, so we responded to one thousand six hundred and fourteen calls in twenty twenty-two. Um, and with our professional standards report, we have statistics on how many, uh, citizen complaints we have and how many use of force usage we have uh, per year. And in twenty twenty-one, we had five citizen complaints. In twenty twenty-two, we had three. Uh, also with use of force, in twenty twenty-one, we had thirty-three uses of force. Use of force can mean anything from a quick little risky twisty, someone uses pepper spray, taser, all that to leave force, which we did not have in that. Uh, so, but we had thirty-three in twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-two, we only had twenty of them. So we have decreased, we have, we've done more calls, no more case reports, done more arrests. Yet we get less, less complaints and get into less use of force. And this is reflected proper and effective. First level supervision, our annual training curriculum then includes five-based policing, sexual harassment, appendix, de-escalation, use of force, defensive tactics, uh, and officer safety. So they're doing just a tremendous job out there. Um, and implementing what they're learning in training and we can definitely see the results out there. Um, also, I'd like to note that, um, in respect to that, um, every officer last year obtained over a hundred hours of, of additional training. That could be anywhere from firearms to defensive tactics to some other, um, specialty class that they're taking. And why, why, I think what that's, or I know why that's very important to, to hear is because the mandated, uh, hourly, uh, yearly hourly mandated for officers is by C D A T C is point four hours. So we're speeding that extensively. We're giving them more training. It's even mandated by the, by the state. So that really, I think that really correlates into why we're seeing a decrease in citizen complaints and Okay, Mayor. Okay, um, so quick, uh, a few more statistics here. Crime against people, it basically from two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, it relatively stayed uh, the same. We did have one more homicide and, well, two more homicides. One was a charged as murder and one was a manslaughter. Everything else was pretty, pretty much on par. It stayed the same from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. And that's the same for crimes against property, um, from twenty-one to twenty-two. We did have a few elevations when it comes to robbery and burglary and a few others there. We saw some increases as well, though. We're kind of staying on par. We're not, like, any, what, we're not same, same, same stance. Okay, and traffic, traffic citations. Uh, last year, uh, we issued one hundred and twenty-five criminal citations. And criminal citations can mean, you know, driving a suspended license, um, DUIs, reckless driving, hit and run. So those are, those are called criminal citations because those kind of fall on this meter level. That's where you get your citations at the west end. We also issued one hundred and thirty traffic citations and there was a total of about fifty DUIs that should have been arrested. Uh, we did have three fatal traffic accidents. Uh, one was medically related and resulted in a front and railroad. Um, unfortunate gentleman, that's for the medical issue. One was driving, drove off the road into the shack, you know, there. And, um, and unfortunately, the, the person within the shack had succumbed to dangerous, regardless of that, that traffic accident. The other ones, um, were, uh, were indicated on the previous slide with our murder, our homicides, murder and our homicide. Uh, those two, uh, were accidents where higher drug or alcohol. Next one, Mayor. Then last year, Sergeant Diaz and Sergeant Downs, um, both got new K nine partners, Lex and Ballard. They, um, did twenty, two hundred hours each of training to bring them up to certification. And they are now active, uh, K nine control teams and in the Shelton, and they help outline areas, Winston County, and get their assistance. We've gone out to Burnerton and helped them, but didn't have people as well. So our assistance is, is used throughout the county and for her supply. We'd just like to thank the, the continued support and donations from the public, uh, as the teams are, are funded by patients. And let's see, uh, just a, just a little side story, um, before giving a shop and a cop. Last, uh, last year, it was a night shift. Uh, we had four officers respond to a welfare check of a crying baby. It was Sergeant Downs, also W, Officer Atonia, and Officer Whitley. When they got to the apartment, they found a, uh, a young, uh, young infant, um, that was not clothed, did not have any food. There was nobody around to care for the child. So they took that child and into protective custody. Uh, the unfortunate thing about taking a child and taking custody about two o'clock in the morning is CPS isn't readily available to respond to our needs. So they had to take this custody, actually brought it down to the Shelton Police Department. Uh, Officer Tony went to Walmart and got clothing, food, diapers and all the accessories for this child. And then they cared, uh, for this child for a few hours, um, until CPS arrived to investigate it for us. And that's just, I like to show that's a very nice representation of our values and our community and love for the community. There's, there's, you know, uh, there's just nothing that, you know, is out of our reach sometimes. Uh, the catch-all for everything, you know? That's a responsibility we've got, babysitters, uh, for a child until we get it to the, uh, proper place. And that's what we're going to do. Uh, last thing I have on my agenda, shop with a cop. Uh, la, every year, uh, well, every year, for the past year, we've done shop with a cop, uh, part of it with Walmart. It's a five thousand dollar grant. Um, and then we coordinated a selection of about thirty, forty kids or so and, um, taken shopping. Last year, we had, uh, forty kids participate. Uh, we had to help with Mason County Sheriff's Department, SWAT, violent crime police department, um, Washington State Patrol. Um, so it was a, it was a great effort by all these departments to come together and, uh, get a, get a good Christmas to, to kids who really serve our communities. Um, and lastly, I just actually got off the phone with, uh, a representative of Walmart today. I was a little worried it wasn't getting for a while. We just got a critical five thousand dollar grant for shop with a cop this year. So we've arranged that date. It's going to be on December ninth. And so looking forward to that and we'll start to move on. Other than that, I don't have any more for you. You have any questions?
All right, comments or questions?
Just want to shout out, um, I've been working with the Mace Tom staff. I got to know the records staff. So I noticed in your report there, uh, they've compiled a lot of, uh, PDRs, thousand, thousand PDRs and twelve thousand reports.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, while you guys write a lot of reports, uh, your records, your records can do a tremendous job.
Those aren't a big easy thing to put together because they, they have a lot of process to do.
Sending our appreciation of them. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to extend a big welcome and thank you for all the things that you do. And especially when on difficult callouts, I've been up, that I've observed, um, the professionalism, the high standards of professionalism and patience and understanding that the cops, the cops, the police force, um, uses, um, when they, when they deal with all the citizens. So I've just been very impressed by, um, all the officers that I've seen and how much they do care about the citizens. And I, I just want to let all the citizens know out there, it's okay to call this police department and call in. And you are safe with these folks and they will, they are taking care of us. So that's the message I want to put out there that I really appreciate what you and Chief Beeson have been doing and all the officers. So, um, but I've a hundred percent, um, just faith in you to keep us safe. So, uh, just put it out there.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. They're our service community. They really do a fantastic job.
Yeah, I've done some ride-alongs and, um, it really helped me understand what you guys all go through. And I, though I wasn't in there very long and didn't see a whole lot of different things, um, I have a whole new found respect for our police department. And not only that, y'all are way nicer than I ever expected officers to be. I was impressed and amazed at the human nature and the courtesies that the officers here have for individuals that maybe somebody else wouldn't give that kind of courtesy to. And, and I was, I was, I just amazed, I should write a long letter, but I don't even know how to express how impressed I was with officers in our community. So, yeah.
I follow everyone's comments. Thank you for a great report. Thank you, yourself and Chief Beeson for building a great team out there and, and doing the best we can deal with our limited, um, resources that we have these days. And I'm sure you'd like about five more officers. Unfortunately, we
Absolutely.
We can't afford right now, but, uh, play in the future, we'll, uh, we'll work on that and, uh, but thank you guys. Great job. Great report.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're on to a business agenda. City Manager Mark Ziegler has information for us about the LTAC grant.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Uh tonight I'm bringing to you recommendations from the Lodging and Tourism Advisory Committee uh for twenty twenty-four funding. Uh there is, let's see, about, there's nine total funded. Thirteen applications were received uh through the funding requests. A total of a over a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars was requested in totality. Um there is a total of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents being recommended for funding uh for twenty twenty-four. These include um Bluegrass from the Forest, the Mace County Forest Festival Association, um Mace County Disc Golf uh Association, the Chamber of Commerce amongst other uh projects and programs. Uh this spends down some of the reserves that have been held uh within that account, but does keep a fund balance that matches um the city's statutory fund balance of, of at least twenty percent within this fund as well. So uh I'm happy to answer any further questions. And I, I guess, first of all, I want to thank our volunteers that volunteer on the LTAC committee. Those individuals dedicate their time to come in and work through this process and uh help, help the mayor and uh bring, bring some of these recommendations to, to the council.
Right, Donna, anyone's have a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody want to speak on our LTAC recommendations? All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to forward the Lodging Tax Commission, losing Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation. Action agenda on November seventh, twenty twenty-three, consideration.
All right, comments or questions? Yes, it was a big year this year. Uh I believe last year was sixty-eight thousand dollars was, was funded. And this year, there was a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in requests and we end up settling on ninety-seven thousand in request. And some didn't get funded and hopefully uh following years, we can, we can fund those. It's a, we have a lot of great uh partners out there doing stuff. The Bluegrass brings in thousands of people and Disc Golf, of course, brings in thousands of people and, and also others. And, and I'm glad that we can help them out a little bit with their advertising and to bring people into our city. All right, anything else?
Glad to see the tax use being used as intended.
We have a fun little town. We do a lot of stuff.
Submit projects.
All right, we have a motion to second to forward the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendations to the action agenda for November seventh. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, we have one more item from Mark, a contract for designated question response.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our D C R, yes. So as uh the council remember, back in twenty twenty-two, the homelessness task force was formed and there was a number of recommendations that came from that effort. Uh one of the primary recommendations was finding some mental health services um in this community. The city applied for a grant from Association of Washington Cities early, I think, early this year um to uh embed a designated crisis responder, mental health professional within our police department that could respond uh to calls for those individuals that may be in crisis. They could determine uh what the level of need is uh for those individuals and help them assist them through this, through the system or get them into some treatment uh as needed. Well, that grant ended at the end of June of this year. Um we had uh conversations with uh Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization who uh received some funding to continue this program. Uh so I have a contract tonight with uh Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Service Organization for receiving that funding and then also a contract for consideration with Olympic Health and Recovery Services um that provides the D C R. Um it's the same D C R that's embedded now. They're still providing that service within our police department. So this is a kind of a pass through, if you will, pass through the funds from, from, coming from uh T M B H O and to the city and the city would uh fund the D C R through um Olympic Health and Recovery. So happy to answer any questions, counsel, I have.
Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor moved to place the contracts with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administration Services Organization and Olympic Health and Recovery Services for a designated crisis responder services to November seventh, twenty twenty-three. City Council Action Agenda, preferred consideration.
All right, thank you. Comments or questions?
Just a maybe question, um this going good from P D's perspective? Continue it? Absolutely. Just want to make sure we have uh two thumbs.
Integrated himself very well. You know, he's, he's within our computers, he's on NASA, he monitors radio traffic going out. He actually calls officers on response prior to even being asked you because he knows that he's going to be there anyways. So he starts coordinating with the police assets, so it's just a training assessment.
Very good, thank you.
I, I've heard great, great comments on how well it's working. Uh people don't remember that we had D C Rs that come out of Olympia, Thurston County before we had somebody embedded here with the police department and somebody would be down in crisis downtown, banging their head against the wall. Well, by the time that the D C R from Thurston County would come down and they're calm, the D C R would say they're calm. Bye, I'm going back to Thurston County. So now we have somebody that's closer, can get there faster and, and see somebody in crisis. And, and I, and I've heard great things uh from the police and from our city manager that it's, it just really was a great uh, a great program and I hope we continue this.
This funding, to, to clarify, this funding is through the end of this year. Uh so we don't have designated funding uh for this program in twenty twenty-four. We're hopeful there's additional resources through uh these organizations to continue this program in twenty-four. So we're continuing to have those discussions.
I'm lucky to have it now.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to second to place the contract Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administration Services Organization and Olympic Health and Recovery Services for a designated crisis responder service to November seventh, twenty twenty-three. City Council Action Agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, opposed.
Motion carries. I ask you to long.
Long motion for you. It's from Public Works. It was said Jay Harris wrote that.
All right, I'm guilty. Our only action item is the revolution for sale of surplus real estate parks. Rec supervisor Jordan Crumples has details for us.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of council. Tonight I bring back to you the piece of property within our, our neighborhood park. Um the sliver of property is below two thousand square feet and the park is a little over seventy-two thousand square feet. Um we are looking to surplus this piece of property to the neighbor and shore who is already kind of utilizing the space. Um for us, there's no negative impact on recreational value towards the park. Um it was in the back aspect and wooded areas, so there's no proactive wreck. There's no negative impact. Um so the overall value again for the overall property is two hundred thousand. So and the sliver of property that we would be surplusing, it is valued at six thousand. So um just we're looking for a final approval tonight to surplus the properties, neighbor.
Thank you, Jordan. Anyone sign up for a comment, Donna?
Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak? All right, we have a, a reading of resolution number one, two, nine, one dash zero, eight, two, three.
Resolution number one, two, nine, one dash zero, eight, two, three. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, declaring certain real estate under city ownership surplus to the needs of the city.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to approve resolution number one, two, nine, one dash zero, eight, two, three, as presented.
All right, comments or questions? Pretty easy, thank you. We have a motion to second to approve resolution number one, two, nine, one dash zero, eight, two, three, as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Mark, do you have city manager, manager report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got a few things for you today. Wanted to uh give a little report on the state delegation visit on Monday. So our two representatives and Senator uh visited with us on Monday for a couple hours. Uh we had four council members, president, as well as a leadership team, got to hear about the uh delegation's uh, I guess opinion of what they, what will come of the, the short session after, after uh the first of the year. Um there's not a lot of capital funds uh left because it's, because it's this short session. So uh large infrastructure projects probably won't see uh funding. There is the ability to um, to make some requests. We're putting together a legislative agenda that will come to council. Um most likely the end of November um to, for consideration. So we can put forth with um our lobbyists and make sure that gets into our representatives beforehand. But we had a lot of conversations out in the tour about, about our agendas and the infrastructure needs that we have, we have in our community. We visited the angle side pressure zone, showed them the tank. They could actually visualize the tank and the pressure um uh station up there and how the impact of the Coffee Creek subdivision and the other um kind of pressure of, of residential development in those areas that we have uh. Representative Griffey is a former firefighter. He understands fire flows. So it was good to have someone like that in the, in the van with us on the tour that could communicate that, the real life experiences those folks face uh out, out in the field when uh they're providing public safety that, that is so desperately needed here and the, the resources and the infrastructure we need to support them. Uh we visit the satellite wastewater treatment plant, talked about the needs there and the economic development um potential with expansion of that system and the, and the um upper mountain view pressure zone as well. Uh as well as looked at a couple of the other subdivisions coming um down the pike, including, including Meadows Edge uh just on Shelton Springs Road that broke ground, I believe, last week. So there, that annexation you saw earlier this year and they're off and running with their uh preliminary plat work, get their public infrastructure in place. Um thirty-six houses um just off of uh Shelton Springs subdivision. And also went up to Olympic Heights uh above the college in that subdivision that's slated there. So got to show them some of the impacts that we're going to be seeing in this community. Uh some of the infrastructure deficiencies that we have um currently and that we could see with some of these impacts and how we're addressing those. So valuable conversation, uh mayor was, was with us uh on our little trip. And I think, uh, I think it was, it was worthwhile to have that opportunity um to further, further explain uh Shelton's needs um to these, to his uh, to this rep, the representatives in Olympia.
Yep, climb in your thirty-year-old van and drive him around.
Not quite thirty.
Maybe we'll get a van for Christmas.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
It was, it was great that, it was great being with them and showing them, you know, what their needs are in the future, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's important that they understand. Um it's not just a piece of paper and the legislative agenda comes, comes and they can see it uh on the ground and understand that. Yeah, I, I think one of, maybe one of the most useful conversations came out is um really the need, we, state bid laws are as such that you, you've got thresholds. You have limits on what the city can perform uh monetarily on a, on a public works project, hundred and twenty-five thousand or so, Jay. So uh we're limited, as you know, what kind of paving projects we can do in-house. So um really talked about how partnerships with Mason County and the city of Shelton would really benefit towards increasing that limit, especially for rural communities like this. And I think Representative Griffey really uh felt like that was a worthwhile opportunity. Um and so we're gonna provide him some more information, some more information to uh Troy Nichols, our consultant, to uh see if uh maybe there's an opportunity for a bill down the line that benefits um the city of Shelton and Mason County at the same time. And we can get uh, we can get more work done in our communities with uh, with uh maybe a changing threshold or, or some allowances that allows us to work together a little more proactively.
On the bidding piece, looking at cost escalation as a trigger to reevaluate, reevaluate the R C W around that. It's, I think, justification enough to lift that up a little bit and I do fully support that. Um if we can do it with our resources in-house, working with the county um and we're statutorily, um you know, pigeonhole on that, then we should absolutely entertain and work with them on a policy change on that. That'd be great. That'd be an awesome project.
Yeah. Uh earlier today, uh the council subcommittee on homelessness met. So we're making some strides on um some infrastructure, reaching out faith-based community, um seeing what kind of partnerships can be built there. So we'll continue uh plugging away at this project and uh note uh updating the council uh when it's appropriate to have some uh, bring some action forward. And then uh wanted to recognize um our communication specialist and our finance director and some information they put out, I think just today, right, Mary? Yeah, so kind of a budget one-on-one, if you will. So as we're entering budget season, uh we want to inform the public on what a, you know, how budgets formulated, how, how, how the tax funds are brought in, what they can be applied to. Um it really, you know, how, how this whole little system uh budgeting works. So it's, it's, it's not, you know, it's not extremely detailed and complex, but it provides enough information that you understand um how tax funds are collected, where there's, where there can be associate, this, the associate spending can be um placed uh within the city's budget, what some of the constraints are. Um how much um of the property tax is actually collected in the city? Um you know, when you pay your tax bill to Mason County, how much comes to the city, state schools, places like that? I think there's some misunderstanding, I think, um o- over that whole, um over that whole system and taxation. So um this is out on the website, we're promoting it as well. We, we hope that it garners communication, better understanding with our community as we adopt a budget coming up here in November. There'll be another um iteration of this. They'll talk more about spent, the actual spending of those funds as we work closer to, again, adoption of that budget. So we'll continue providing information like that as we move forward. Um I think one of the um projects we're talking about uh revolves around code enforcement. And particularly, you know, we've talked about fourteen eleven railroad and we all want some uh resolution to that, to that property. Uh well, we have statutory requirements we have to follow and be able to communicate those statutory requirements. So the public understands what we're going through and what we have, the, the requirements that we have to meet before we can take action there is really important. So we're gonna take every opportunity we can to communicate those processes so the public can better understand um what we're, what we're doing and how we're functioning here at the city of Shelton. That's all I have for you tonight.
Anyone have any comments or questions for the city manager tonight? Right. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic not listed on the agenda. Donna, anyone sign up for public comment tonight?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Our first person is Clay Long.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilman. I am the president of Mason Falls. We're having some problems with homeless people in our disturbing integrated. But this has actually come to a point where our employees, I share. I'm not saying increase the product integration. You really are, you're doing great job. But the only one of these homeless people, it's just, it'd be a serious problem. I know that we're doing some things to try to help that. But I'm glad, I'd like to have our manager read a letter of some of the things that's happening in the department that's causing their fear.
So hopefully I don't miss this. Uh my name is Michelle Larson, I'm the manager and keeper of the torch. We have heard of the Mason County Community Activities Association, a local nonprofit and children. The store has been in business for, in Shelton for over thirty-seven years and this is my fifteen year working for the association. Throughout the years, we have worked many other organizations throughout the county, doing what we can to support those in need while still being the major funding source for this. The reason why we, my board and other employees are here tonight is to give you the city leaders a little insight on what we have ventured over the last couple of years with the crime and vandalism that have occurred at our business. We have had safety concerns and bodily harm and violence recently. We have seen an uptick in the homeless population and many of these people are not local to our community. They do not have the same love and respect that others have for our town. We have done the best to help in any way we can by giving them clothing, blankets and dry socks and shoes. Last week, we had our garbage cans set on fire for the third time. They have destroyed our garbage numerous times. In March, we had a fire caused by arson and they did over seventy-six thousand dollars of damage. We have literally replaced hundreds of logs on our garbage cans and chains over the last few years. We come to work in the morning and walk the neighborhood to clean up the wreckage that people have created throughout the night. We have exhausted all efforts and finally decided that we will use the minimal level of garbage service to prevent this from happening. This makes it very hard on our business because now our garbage will not be taken to my home and then to the dump. Another very serious issue is the crime that we have been dealing with. It has become out of control. The drug use that we see happening right in our front parking lot on Main Street while the community's children are walking public school every week. Last week, we had a shop that there's still a large kitchen knife in it during the altercation. Me and my employees felt very frightened by this behavior. We always work in teams because we are uneasy by the people who walk through our alley during the day while we were, when we are receiving donations. The safety of everyone and employees and shelters is always on my mind. Thank you, and I would like to say thank you to the police department because every time we call, we had a great response. We appreciate you. Thank you.
It is a problem. I don't know what.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to add? Do you want to do those as two different public comment sessions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, if you like two minutes.
I know marriage bill. I don't know if that is something that we can look at. We're, we're not, we're hurt about, about leaving. So anything that, that on sort of the mayor. Can help us with, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Mayor, we have Dean Jewitt.
Good evening, Dean Jewitt, my time in Mason County member. It's kind of ironic that we have that fifty thirty to come up to have that kind of conversation. You are all very well aware of what is going on in our community and so are the police officers. So to continue to hear this and how many times I've said it. It, it almost floors me to where we're still at. To me, and I know this upsets the mayor, is that it's a dereliction of duty. I mean, at what point in time is enough enough? I mean, I really have a hard time wrapping my head around that. Um, we have an organization like that. I'm skipping all the stuff that I wanted to talk about. Uh, it's, it blows me away. The police officers do respond. They do what they can do. But when they don't have the support. Of city government and the council or very little support, or you do not think outside of the box. Take a look at the Thurston County Sheriff. Okay, he thinks outside of the box. Everybody sitting on council needs to think outside of the box. And if you can't. Then you shouldn't be sitting up there in the first place. So Brewer Park, we started out with gangbusters. Now, we don't even have people showing up. To do what we're trying to do and people are starting to move back in. I ended up having to go break another camera apart by myself. That's number five. So I'm asking Mark, can I use your dumpster instead of mine to throw that away? Oh, no, maybe you can give me an email. Uh, it gets old and it gets dangerous. I have to practice my second, second amendment rights to be able to go out there and feel safe to do that. Why should I even have to do that? Because I care about our community. I want the tourism. I want the people to come here, just like you guys do. I don't have to be at odds with you. We just have different approaches. Okay? We shouldn't have people be afraid to walk downtown or, or to go to a business or not go. My eighty year old mother was nervous about going down to a haircutting place across the post office park. I had to assure her that during the day and that I'd be there with her, that she was fine. And we hear this over and over again. Uh, the gentleman spoke about Marysville. Does anybody remember me talking about Marysville and what they do and how they do it? Uh, I think it would really need to think outside of the box and really focus on what's important. And that's the foundation of our community and how we build on that positive foundation. And make it strong. It's going to take all of us. It's not going to take me up here yelling at you or you disagree. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
And Mr. Mayor, we have one more person via Zoom and that is Colleen Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor Nesko, Deputy Mayor Schmidt and fellow council members. I'm Colleen Carmichael, the executive director for Quixote Communities. As you're aware, one of the goals that the homeless task force was. Given was to form a plan to reduce homelessness and the navigation center is one of those. So to further that, we met and we have some points that were discussed and we will be doing more discussions. One of those is, of course, we need to determine a location for the navigation center. The providers are considering who is going to take the lead on that. We are also going to visit two cities where they have navigation centers. One of those is Everett. In twenty twenty one, they did twenty pallet shelter units. And in twenty twenty two, because it was going so well, they've added twenty more. They saw a significant reduction in encampments, litter and drug use. Public Works reported sixty six percent less resources needed for road and sidewalk cleanups. And the police reported an eleven percent reduction in report calls for service. Longview is another city that has the pellet shelters. They did fifty starting in twenty twenty two. And in just two months, three people have already found permanent housing. Jason Dose was part of the meeting from the city. He had questions about zoning and permitting, which was answered by the city of Everett's presentation. The site rules, provider agreements, site prep and all information needed to establish a navigation center with pallets. Is available from Everett as well as Longview and they're willing to share their information with us. Funding opportunities will be forthcoming in March of twenty twenty four, so we need to meet monthly. Until we come to a proposal that we will submit to the city and county. And the next meeting we have is scheduled for November the sixth at eleven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is anyone in the audience like to speak that didn't sign up for public comment? The council will be, will now meet for an executive session to discuss potential purchase of property as allowed by RCW forty two point three oh point one, one, zero, one. Be, the council will be in a ticket session for fifteen minutes and we will return at seven oh five.
Fifteen minutes, seven. I'm sorry, seven, twelve.
Seven, twelve.
I don't know, that's right.
I think that's a little tight, right?
Will you go up here?
We're going to extend this for ten more minutes. We'll be back at seven twenty.
I always see, I always see the, the.
No, I donate every Monday. It's something I do and then once every five.
All right, I know everybody sat down. Cause uh, I get my clock going here, so I don't say the wrong time. This means adjourned at seven twenty P M. What I missed. Oh, council, okay, meaning it's not adjourned. All right.
I'm just kidding.
Our next meeting is Tuesday, November seventh at six P M. We also have a study session on October twenty fourth at six P M. Now this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty one P M. I just thought we were done.
Thirty seconds later.
I thought we were done.